Okay, so we have come out of executive session. Is there anything official I need to say about that or just tell people?
Nope.
Okay. The agenda item is the school transportation contract. And before we do public participation, I am going to read a statement. There has been a lot of information shared in the last two weeks. Just in case not all of it was completely accurate, I'm going to read a timeline of what we understand and our council understands. And so it may take a couple of minutes, but I want to make sure that all this information is out publicly. "In January of 2019, the school district hired a professional consultant, Public Management Associates, to administer the bidding process for the school transportation contract." Thank you. The sound of someone who's upset. So I was referring to the consultant. The total cost of that contract is $5,000. "In March of 2019, a school transportation bid was posted in the local newspaper, on town and school bulletin boards, and on the state's goods and services website, seeking proposals to provide the school district with transportation services. Proposals were being sought for a five-year contract, and the deadline for submitting sealed proposals was April 12, 2019. Additionally, notices were sent to 35 different bus companies. A&amp;F Transportation was the only responsive bidder," that's a legal term that means they put in, submitted a sealed bid, "and was therefore awarded the bid. It was the third lowest bus contract price in eastern Massachusetts. The amount of the bid represented approximately a 37 percent increase over the current contract, the current one which began five years ago. The new contract includes many new state requirements that add to the cost of any bus contract. In May of 2019, Town Meeting authorized the school district to award a transportation contract for a term not exceeding five years. On June 3, 2019, the school district was notified by the state inspector general that the bidding process did not comply with the statutory requirements set forth in General Laws, Chapter 30B, Section 5, because the bid was not also advertised on COMBIES, which is the state's official procurement record system. The inspector general specifically cited General Laws, Chapter 30B, Section 17, which states in part, quote, "A contract made in violation of this chapter shall not be valid, and the governmental body shall make no payment under such contract," unquote. Although A&amp;F has pointed out several other contracts in other districts that they believe did not comply with this requirement, we have been advised by our council that the mere fact that other districts may not have complied with certain statutory requirements does not in any way relieve Burlington School District from having to comply with any and all statutory requirements, especially in light of the inspector general's determination and clarification on this issue. As a result of the inspector general's determination, the school district rebid the school bus transportation contract on June 11, 2019, which included also advertising the bid on COMBIES. The bid process was again administered by Public Management Associates. Sealed bids were due to be submitted on June 25, 2019. Although six potential bidders attended the initial bidders meeting for the rebid, only two companies ultimately submitted bids, A&amp;F Transportation and Trombley Motor Coach. It should be noted that the owner of Trombley Motor Coach also owns NRT Bus, although they are separate corporations and legal entities. The low bid was by Trombley Motor Coach, which was $1,022,580 less over the term of the five-year contract, or $204,516 less per year. At the school committee meeting on June 25, 2019, Richard Labrie, Principal of Public Management Associates, recommended that Trombley Motor Coach be awarded the school transportation contract, quote, "on the basis of their being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and in the best public interest," unquote. It should be noted that the bid documents, in according with Chapter 30B, require that the school committee award the contract to the lowest bidder that the school committee determines to be responsive and responsible. Mr. Labrie stated that out of six references that were checked for Trombley Motor Coach, that three were generally good and two were excellent. There was one negative reference against NRT, not Trombley Motor Coach, from over three years ago, although that contract was never canceled for good cause. It should be noted that several references described Trombley as being responsive or highly responsive to issues that arise. Mr. Labrie noted that there have been no issues reported to the Better Business Bureau regarding Trombley Motor Coach, and that they have received mostly five-star ratings on social media with several negative comments regarding drivers and the location of bus stops. After discussion by the school committee on June 25, the issue was tabled until tonight's July 9 meeting. During the interim, several issues have been reviewed and clarified by school committee council and/or Mr. Labrie. The bid documents require that all current bus drivers be offered employment by the successful bidder to continue their routes. Mr. Labrie confirmed that he reviewed the insurance claims history of both bidders dating back three years, and there was nothing in the claims history that indicated any type of unusual safety history or anything that would deem either bidder to be a higher-than-normal safety risk. The bid documents require that the successful bidder obtain annually 100 percent performance bond if requested by the school district to ensure full performance of the requirements set forth in the bid documents. The performance requirements set forth in the bid documents include, but are not limited to, the following: quality of buses, maintenance of equipment, requirement of safety equipment and bus monitors, submission and approval of bus routes and schedules, training, licensure, Cory checks, and drug testing requirements. Additional performance-specific requirements include, but are not limited to, the following: no idling of school buses on school grounds for more than five minutes, replacement buses available to reach and replace on-the-road breakdowns within 20 minutes of notification, accidents must be reported immediately to the contractor and in writing within 24 hours, and the contractor will immediately notify the appropriate school official. Option, if the school committee determines it, to require cameras on buses. If we choose that option, the videotapes and recordings will be maintained by the contractor for a minimum of seven days and will be available to school personnel during that period. Videotape and recording copies will be provided to school personnel upon request. The schedule of route operation shall be maintained in such a manner that students shall be picked up no earlier than 40 minutes before school starts and reach the school no earlier than 10 minutes before classes begin. No bus shall leave the school at the end of the day until all students are boarded and properly seated. At the sole discretion of the district, the district reserves the right to develop routes independent of the contractor for implementation by the contractor. Routes shall be developed in conjunction with school district personnel and requirements and provided to school administrators prior to the start of the school year. Routes shall be updated and distributed as necessary." So that's the end of those additional performance requirements. School committee members have received numerous emails expressing concerns as well as positive feedback. In addition, the Burlington Patch had an article in which it noted, with no sources named, three recent alleged incidents and one alleged incident from 2014 against NRT, not Trombley Motor Coach. We have received additional supporting emails or alleged individual stories, including one about the incidents listed in the Burlington Patch. It is important to remember that the school committee is not allowed to determine who the better company is, but whether the low bidder meets the definition of responsive and responsible. Additionally, it should be pointed out that the school committee cannot consider, under Chapter 30B, whether we believe having to rebid this initial bid, the initial bid, is unfair to A&amp;F. Although each and every incident is taken seriously and considered, we must weigh these alleged incidents and accounts against the overall history of service and safety displayed by each bidder, which has been thoroughly reviewed by professional consultants, as well as the references that each bidder received. We must also consider the fact that individual incidents that were reported were against NRT, not Trombley Motor Coach, while recognizing both companies are owned by the same person. We must also weigh the recommendation of our professional consultant, who determined both companies to be responsive and responsible. The Burlington School Committee has always had a high level of expectations for safety and service. Based upon the responses to our bid specs, our consultant believes those concerns have been met by both bidders. In weighing these factors, it should be noted that Trombley Motor Coach has been incorporated for approximately 68 years, and NRT has been in business for approximately 48 years. NRT has contracts to provide school transportation currently to approximately 17 school districts, regional school districts, and/or education collaboratives, while Trombley Motor Coach currently provides school transportation to at least eight other school districts or public schools. Trombley Motor Coach provides services to approximately 25,000 students daily, which amounts to about 9 million rides per year. NRT provides services to approximately 120,000 students daily, which amounts to about 43 million rides per year. The service history must be taken into consideration when weighed against the other incidents that have been reported. And I will enter this statement into the minutes. At this time, if there are no comments from the committee, I'd like to see if the Ways and Means Committee has any comments at this time. Okay. I will open an opportunity for public participation. I would request, please, that speakers speak for three minutes to present their material. And I think it's obvious that it's related to the topic of the agenda, the school transportation contract. So is there someone who would like to speak? Yes, please come up. And can you be sure that the green light is on your microphone so that it's on? Could each person please also state your name and, you know, why you're here?
John McCarthy, president of NRT School Bus and Trombley Motor Coach.
Okay. Thank you.
First off, thank you for at least considering our company. I'd like to explain why we came back at the second bid versus why we didn't bid the first bid. We did bid this contract five years ago, and our bid was tossed for a technicality based on the serial numbers on brand-new buses that we were going to provide to town. I've been doing this a long time. I saw the stuff, and I saw the comments made in the news and some of the incidents that allegedly happened. Some of those did happen. We're a big company. But we're a company that believes safety comes first. I worked diligently with the governor. I had lunch with the governor three weeks ago, talking about school bus safety. Most of our policies and procedures have been adopted by the state under special needs, child checkmates, GPS cameras. We had, we've been doing that for the last 20 years, and the state finally adopted it. I'm not saying that NRT or Trombley doesn't have its flaws. It has. But I can tell you, as the owner of the largest school bus transportation provider in Massachusetts, I take my job serious. It's the reason why I came tonight. I'm not a golfer. I'm not, I'm very interested in moving forward, if you choose, if this board chooses to go forward with Trombley Motor Coach. My team is eager to come. We will offer positions to all the drivers that decide they want to come. And if there is a driver that chooses not to go with Trombley, we have people in training now that are prepared to come to Burlington. Transition is, can be difficult in the beginning, but again, you have the guarantee that myself and my staff will work diligently for first day of school. This isn't the first time we've come to a new town with a little bit of opposition. We did it with the city of Lowell in 2004. We went into the city with 30 drivers, which was in August, and we needed 72, and we had a driver for every seat when we went in. I'm taking this very seriously, and I hope you'll consider our bid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Is there someone else who'd like to speak?
I'd like to speak if I could.
Yes, please say, state your name for the people who are listening. Thank you.
Yes, I am Bob Bent. I'm the president of the A&amp;F Bus Company, who has been the contractor for the last 25 years here in town. Over a dozen of my drivers are current residents of Burlington. You know, another half dozen grew up in Burlington. You know, over the 25 years that we've been here, I think that we've got over and above making sure that all the buses were, you know, safe, the drivers are safe. You know, I have a staff that's, you know, two safety trainers, two dispatchers, you know, four extra drivers to fill in when we need to, you know, when people are out, and that's what happens. And I, I just want to say, we never let ourselves get stretched too thin. We don't have, want to be the biggest company in Massachusetts. We want to be the best company in Massachusetts, and that's what we strive for for these 25 years. And I just want to say on behalf of my drivers and my company, that, you know, we feel we've always done the right thing for the town of Burlington all the way along, and we feel like that the way this has all gone has not been the right way for it to happen. You know, a larger company, they have the ability to do things, you know, for less money than we can. So anyway, I would wish that you would think, I know you're up against it as far as legally with some things, but think about what we've done for the town and the commitment that my company and my people have had for these 25 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bent. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Again, please state your name.
My name is Alicia Moran. This is Wendy Peterson. We're both safety people with A&amp;F Bus Company. I've been a school bus driver in Burlington for 30 years. I've driven for Bob for 26 of those 30 years. I have some questions about, you know, how this was done as a taxpayer and a resident in this town. $5,000 is a lot of money to pay somebody who should have known the process that was supposed to be done for this contract. And I find that unacceptable that we are in this position today because of that as a taxpayer. I have written a letter to you guys, to the school committee, and have sent it to you. There are some things that I question. You talk about a 20-minute response time. We're school bus drivers in Burlington. We've never had a 20-minute response time for a breakdown or for an accident. Our company is five miles down the road. You know, it's manned by a mechanic. It has a dispatcher. What happens if a driver oversleeps or if a bus gels up in the wintertime? They have to be plugged in. Sometimes our mechanic is fixing things on the fly. Is there a mechanic? Where is the lot? Where's the fuel going to be? Where, you know, where are these spare buses that are going to be able to get here within a 20-minute response time? I heard it was in Wakefield. Have you seen 128 at 12 o'clock in the afternoon?
If I could clarify, Mr. Kuna, the Trombley bus lot is within five miles of Burlington, and it's in Wilmington? Is that correct?
I know where it is in Wilmington.
Okay.
And it's, that's on RT. It's not Trombley.
Okay.
And we've also, unfortunately, our drivers that used to work there aren't here tonight, but I was told, you know, it's not a manned yard. I don't know if that's true or not, but there's not a dispatcher on site. There wasn't a mechanic on site. They were required to call in when they showed up for work, which is possible for a driver to oversleep. I've done it twice in 30 years. I just, you know, the stops, we know a lot of the kids. I actually drive children now that I drove their parents. We know their routines. We know, you know, what kid is supposed to be going to the after-school program, and what days they're supposed to be going to the after-school program. And believe me, some of these, you know, a lot of the stops and stuff like that, yeah, they're not just, you go from point A to point B. There's A, B, C, D, E, and we have to know where all those are. And yes, I know, and now the company is, will have that. There is a learning curve on that. But like my boss said, you know, there's 12 of us that are residents of this town, four of us that have children in this town. I started this job, it was a temporary job for me because my daughter's special needs. My daughter, who my boss hired to be a monitor, okay? And I was able to provide for my family, you know, share the income with my family and have a job and take care of my daughter also. This was a temporary job for me. I'm still here. And I would like to retire with my boss. On a personal note, I couldn't ask for a better person. I'm not sure what else to say.
Okay.
I just hope that, you know, you take things into consideration. There's a lot of questions and, that's what I want to say. Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you also want to speak, Mr.?
Sure. I'm Wendy Peterson. I'm a taxpayer and a resident of over 30 years. I have three boys who have gone through the school system and ridden the buses, and I'm also a bus driver of 17 years. I can't say more for a small bus company and the services. In this town, the services that are provided is what keeps me here, and the services of a small bus company, and the response time, and the personal, the personal relationship between the students and the parents and the security that they feel with the drivers that they have here. Not saying that they won't establish that with other people. I'm not under, you know, saying that somebody, they don't have good drivers as well. I love my job, two and a half miles to my bus yard. I'm out there at 6 o'clock in the morning picking up your children, and I'm loving my, loving my job. I just, it's a good service, and there's a lot to be said for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Klein. A question for you, Ms. Wendy?
No, not a question. Thank you, thank you for your comments. I just wanted to, just one of the issues that was raised is, the school district sets forth in the specifications, a, the chair read a very small amount of the requirements, the performance requirements and the safety requirements. It's about 50 pages worth of requirements. Any, whoever the successful bidder is has agreed in an unqualified way to conform to all of those requirements. And if whoever the successful bidder is does not, then the school district will have a right to cancel the contract. So all those require, there's been, we determined, the school district, I don't mean me personally, but the school district determined what performance requirements were required, what safety requirements were required, and both bidders agreed that they would comply with all of those requirements.
Is there someone else who would like to speak? Yes, please. Again, if you would please state your name.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm Beth Colburn, and I'm a parent, taxpayer, and voter here in town. My son rides the bus with A&amp;F, and I just wanted to attest, as a generic parent, that we've been very happy with the services we've received from A&amp;F. I feel safe allowing my son on the bus with A&amp;F. He's ridden the bus for four years. He's had several different drivers, several different monitors. I've been happy with them all. I will also say, I'm here as part of the Burlington CPAC, as a member of the board, and as a special needs parent. It takes a lot to put your nonverbal child on a bus, and I trust A&amp;F with that. I don't know this new company, right, other than the things I've heard, but I will say as a member of the CPAC, that I've been receiving stories from parents in other districts, and some of these things I'm sure you've heard are appalling and terrifying. And hearing the way in which these things have been addressed is still appalling and terrifying, even if you want to say there's two different companies. There, I don't think they've been addressed appropriately, and that concerns me moving forward. I know they have to comply with the rules you have, but it looks like there's a history of not complying with some things, and that's a concern as a parent of a child on the bus.
Yes, thank you.
My name is Megan Novoicek. I'm co-president of the Burlington CPAC. I have two children in preschool, one who's going into kindergarten in the fall. It was a big decision for me to put my children on the bus, receiving special education with language delays. One of my biggest concerns has always been their ability to advocate for themselves, and I think, you know, A&amp;F Bus has done everything that they can to make me feel comfortable, to, you know, help me understand what goes on the bus with my own children. It's, you know, a very difficult decision when you have a child that can't advocate for themselves. My children have felt nothing but happy and safe. Our drivers, Dorian and Sharon, are just the best. I appreciate them tremendously. I think it's important to note also that, you know, A&amp;F Bus Company is Burlington. Burlington is, has such a strong community, and we appreciate all the men and women who drive for us and for our children and who do their best every day to take care of our kids. And I think the safety of special needs children is of the utmost importance, and the stories that have been documented in the media for NRT, and clearly owned by the same person, must have very similar business practices, are unacceptable, absolutely. And I think that these issues just cannot be overlooked.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Yes. Again, if you would please state your name and...
My name is Roger Bell. Taxpayer and Town Meeting member in Precinct 6. My children are out of the school system, so everybody was speaking about their children and the school buses, et cetera. I respect what they have to say, and I think that's good that they've come forward to express their concerns. Mine is from a different point of view. Number one, how did this particularly happen? As a Town Meeting member, I'm concerned that we didn't follow specifics based on what the state requires us? How did this happen that we have a consultant and we still had to go through this process where we are right now? So if somebody could explain to me how this took place and why?
I think that I explained that in my summary of the timeline.
I mean, the fact is, we've had many bids for many different things. You have to follow protocol. How is it this didn't happen? And why do we have to get called on, basically called on the car? And why do we have to get called on, basically called on the carpet by the inspector general on this? And, and how did it happen and why?
I could just say briefly, the, the consultant had an opinion that, that a contract of this size did not have to get posted on COMBIES. The, I mean, the inspector general disagreed with that and felt that the law said otherwise. And that's how it happened. It certainly wasn't unintentionally, it was an error, at least in the inspector general's opinion. And as the chair had read, you know, any time a contract is not done in conformance of Chapter Thirty-B, it's not a valid contract.
So is this also run by the legal section of this town, in terms of when we went out to bid? Did we get any input on that, in terms of where it should be placed and what posted? I mean, we're, you know, we're relying on a contractor at that point, correct? So, do we have any fallback in terms of the legal implications when something like this takes place? Do we have any fiduciary responsibility to the state? Are they gonna come back on us for any of this, or is this strictly a notice to rebid the contract?
So, so the, I'll speak just very briefly to that. The, the, the state understood, the inspector general actually put in their opinion that they understood that a mistake was made by the consultant and noted that the school district, you know, in, in hiring a consultant was clearly trying to do the right thing and actually paid money for professional assistance. And I don't wanna say they commended the school committee for it, but they certainly thought enough of that to actually put that in, into their opinion, noting that the school committee, you know, clearly did what they were supposed to do, and even more so, they hired a professional consultant that they haven't in the past. You know, I think the consultant has a very good reputation out there, I think he made a mistake, or at least in the inspector general's opinion, made a mistake.
Does that imply that there'll be any fiduciary responsibility on the part of the town for this? Would anybody come back at us because of the bid process?
I think it, I think it is possible, whichever way the school committee votes tonight, that the, the, I mean, it's always possible, anything's possible. If somebody doesn't get the contract tonight, they have their rights to file what they may file. They may not, hopefully they don't, but I certainly can't sit here and promise you that they will not, you know.
All right, so there's a possibility the town could be on the hook for something here?
Anytime a municipality or a school district makes a decision, there is a possibility that claims can be filed. I'm not, I'm not gonna go into the merits of the claim here tonight.
So, so it does open it up to some possible lawful suit against the town? There is that possibility, as you say.
I'm saying, any single time this school committee takes a vote, there's a possibility that somebody could challenge it in a number of different ways. And that's true for this contract, and it's true for the next contract, and it's true for whatever issues, other issues you take up at your next meeting.
If you could also wrap up.
Okay. Thank you. And no matter what you vote here tonight, I'm assuming it has to go back for a special town meeting, 'cause nothing can be voted on money-wise?
No, town meeting, do you want to answer that?
I'm happy to answer.
Okay, go ahead.
That, that's not true, the town, there's a, my understanding is, there's been sufficient funds already appropriated for this contract, and there's also been authorization given for, by town meeting to enter into up to a five-year contract for school transportation services. So no, no further town meeting vote is needed at this time.
Okay. Well, I'd like to thank you for your time and your effort, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And I know someone else had their hand up, yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name is Renee Andronica, I have two children in the school system that ride the bus, although my daughter, she rides the A and F bus every day to preschool. She's happy as a clam to see Mary Jo every morning. My son got to ride with Mary Jo too, when he was in preschool. It was delightful, he was very happy. Unfortunately, now he's, some kids are with Christensen Bus, I'm not entirely sure why, I'm sure I won't get an answer to that tonight. I would like to see A and F for both my children, but I just wanted to make a point that while I understand that A and F, the bid is significantly more, I strongly feel like if, if it's working, don't mess with it. It's quality over quantity, I'd rather pay the few extra tax dollars. To have a bus company I trust with both of my children every day, five days a week, a hundred eighty days a year. So, just wanted to point that out, and that, you know, we love A and F in our family, and we want to support them however we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, please come up, oh, I'm sorry.
Through, through the chair again, just, one thing I just want everyone to understand. What Thirty-B requires and also the bids require, which were done in conformance with Thirty-B, is to select the lowest bidder that is fat, determined to be both responsive and responsible. The, the school committee hasn't taken any vote on that issue. The consultant recommended both companies to be responsive and responsible, which means, regardless of what the school committee feels about really all the very heartfelt comments that are being made today, whether they think one company is better than the other, they're not allowed that discretion under Thirty-B and under the bid specifications. They are required to take the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Not of the two, which one they prefer or issues such as that. And that's the way that Chapter Thirty-B is set up to favor the low bidder, and that's the law. Whether we, there's many laws we probably don't totally agree with, but that is what the law states.
Yes, please, do you need?
Mildred Nash, I'm a town meeting member, and I'm interested in this from a slightly different perspective than other people who have come up, although I hear what they're saying. And if I could ask a question first, just to make sure I heard correctly, that if the bid were to go to the other company, it sounds as if the current drivers would have the first say in getting the jobs. So there wouldn't be a huge change, as seems to be somewhat indicated here.
It's, yes, the contract states that the current bus drivers in Burlington would be offered a job. If they choose to go and work with a new company, we would have many of the same drivers, yes.
Okay, thank you. Where I come from is at the January town meeting, I was blindsided not once, but twice, which is why it's hard to see you. The first thing that I discovered, which was horrifying to me, was that the Beeline, which is the other bus company that we deal with here, is on its final year. And it seems to me that so many people have no idea about this. And since I have been on the Beeline Committee for decades, and I have not been called to a single meeting in the last two years, I have to say, hmm, maybe our committee wasn't being very creative, and, and there are many problems that aren't being solved. But by the same token, I felt that when we hired a consultant, and in fact, I talked to both Mr. Kuna and John Sanchez and Dr. Conte at the January meeting, I said, I know you've hired a consultant, but I would hope you would perhaps think of some way that the school buses and the Beeline could work together for quality improvement in both cases. And I won't go into that because I don't have time, but since then, I have been bothering as many people as I can manage to. And I called up the coordinator for the Lexpress, because I knew that at one time, their mini-bus system was the only, I thought, means of high school transportation. And that turned out to be right, but not applicable to us per se, because they charge fees if you want to ride the school bus. And one of the things I love about Burlington is that we have not gone that route with school buses or athletics and so forth. I'm very proud of my town for exactly that reason. So I realize we need to get creative, and I think what troubles me is that when there is this second contract, which it seems like if they don't come through with as good a bus service as we're used to, they're in big trouble, because that's what both parties are signing onto. But that the contract we signed, which I heard you say is around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more per year over the five years...
We have not signed a contract, I just wanted to make that clear.
I'm saying, if we went with the, the current contractor, if that would be the case, the annual budget for the Beeline has been forty thousand dollars. The difference between two hundred and fifty thousand and forty is quite colossal. And it seems to me that what I'm asking here, in your making your decision, is some kind of fiscal equity that you either, as a committee, which may be beyond the scope of what you can do, or individually, will push for keeping the Beeline in. I think that it should be funded, as are the school buses, that no one pays, that we have enough buses so that people can ride them. We're down to one bus, because it's so impossible to use unless you're totally desperate. So I'm hoping you'll make the right decision, I'm glad you're sitting there, not me. But I'm hoping that you will keep in mind that we want to have public transportation for students and other people who seriously need it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there someone else who would like to speak? Yes, please.
Good evening, I'm in Sickler Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four. Can, can you explain the process and timeline after this evening?
Oh, after this evening? Were you here when I gave the timeline of how we got to tonight?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I actually am not the expert on that. Would you be the person to describe that, please, Mr. Klein?
I mean, briefly, is, if the school committee votes to award the contract to either bidder tonight, the parties would then sit down and enter into a contract consistent with the bid specifications. And that contract would then need to be approved by the contractor and the school committee.
And what's that timeline? Is that in thirty days or sixty days?
I think it would, the, probably, I would assume both parties would be as soon as possible. I mean, obviously, we have a school year to begin, and the last contract ran out on June thirtieth, so I think it's, I think both sides would certainly like to do it as, as quickly as possible, while making sure that the contract satisfies, you know, both sides' needs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please, come up.
Hello, Jennifer Priest, I'm a parent in town, will have a kindergarten after, kindergarten or next year, excuse me. My question is, is the consultant is the one who made the oversight or ever in regards to posting this job, correct? Is that how, how I understood that?
The consultant administered the first process, that's correct.
Okay, so, we're trusting them now that they're providing us with accurate information, even though they made, it seems like a large oversight as a taxpayer, to miss this big piece of their job, posting it properly. So we're trusting that the information they're providing on both companies is accurate and factual, and that they've done their work appropriately, since they had quite a big error to start this off?
The school committee hasn't made any votes yet, but it, but part of what the consultant did, and it wasn't just the consultant, it was town staff, is they did gather a lot of information. So some of that has been verified in a, you know, but I, you know, I, my guess is the school committee's gonna take everything into consideration.
Yeah, I understand that, I just wanna like, I'm just trying to understand, like, if they're the ones that made the error, I would definitely be hesitant to take their information as factual, and did they get all the information that they were supposed to? If town employees were also involved in that process, that makes it a little bit easier to understand that there's been definitely due diligence in investigating both of the companies. But if not, and it was all solely relied on the consultant that we hired, who made a, I think, is a major error, I'd be a little bit concerned.
Can you address that, Mr. Kuna, at all? You were involved with the process as well, right, and we've done some other looking into those incidents, so...
Exactly, so as far as collecting information, verifying anything as far as the bid process, verifying any references and so forth, that was done in two parts by myself and the consultant as well. Any emails that came into school committee may have been verified on their end, but any communications that have come to me have been verified as well. So it's not been solely relied on just the consultant to then relay the information to me and then to the school committee. It's been a three-way communication between myself, the consultant, and our new information has been relayed up to the school committee and/or superintendent.
And the, the references are provided by the bus contract companies, or are they just like a list of who they've recently serviced, and you can pick who you want?
So as far as the bid spec goes, we have required them to provide at least three references, but those are not the only references that we did check and were allowed to check in the process. So other references besides the three provided were checked.
Okay, yes, all right, thank you.
On both companies.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, please.
Hi, my name's Samantha Hurley, and I have three children that take the bus now. And I understand that you guys are in a little bit of a predicament with the laws you have to follow. But I do, from a parent perspective, there's two different, in the responsible and responsive, it's a little bit different thought. I believe both companies could get my child from my house to the school safely. But there's a level of comfort, and it's not just like being comfortable, like I had one instance with Wendy who's here, where I had two children in opposite schools, trying to get them on the bus, and an infant. And I was just trying to do the best I could, often being, you know, late to one bus or missing a bus. And she saw that upon herself, to make an arrangement to get my bus stop moved. I didn't ask for that, and she just saw that as a person. I also have a young child that when he started in BECC, he talked very little at all, and definitely not in school. And he started talking a lot more at home, he still does not talk much at school. But he talks on Mary Jo and Dottie's bus nonstop. And there's something very special about that as a parent, to hear that, to hear your child get off the bus and tell you about a friend that he made on the bus, and stories about what Mary Jo and Dottie do. It, it's more than just getting from point A to point B safely. And I understand that they are going to offer these wonderful bus drivers a job, but that doesn't mean they're gonna take them. And that this is a small company, and I think it's kinda obvious that you're getting a small company's results. I mean, and these are also our neighbors, and, you know, people we see in the supermarket, people our kids recognize. I mean, my kids are devastated to think of the thought that they're not gonna have some of these bus drivers. And these are, I mean, these are two stories of people who happen to be here. But I have countless stories of different bus drivers that have done that same, small-town things have made our kids feel comfortable, and our pa, me as a parent, comfortable in a different kind of way. And having a child that doesn't, has trouble communicating, and knowing a lot of times, he's on the bus first or last to get dropped off, I don't know that without A and F Bus, my child will go on that bus. And I'm sure I'm not the only parent that feels that way. And then you also do have another issue where you're gonna have more parents driving their kids to school, which I don't know what does for safety for the town and schools. But I mean, just for me personally, it's safety in getting to A to B, but then there's a safety in who these people are as bus drivers, and what this company does, and how they search out these wonderful people that make our kids feel safe and special.
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I will speak for myself, although I think other members feel the same, that we have been very appreciative of the services from A and F Bus Company, and really like the employees, the drivers, that have taken such wonderful care of our children. And whatever the, the decision is, that's not in question.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, please come up.
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
My name is Maria and I work for the town and I was.
Could you give us her full name?
Maria Labarrio.
Labarrio.
Yeah. So, um, I'm currently an employee of the town of Burlington. I was formerly an employee for A and F Bus and I still do temporarily cover for A and F Bus on an immediately needed basis, such as someone's out of town, somebody got sick, something happened and I'm called in a moment's notice, excuse me, and I'm happy to respond. Um, I'd just like to clarify a couple of things and maybe get a little feedback. So Mr. McCarthy made note that he would provide employment to the current employees of A and F Bus. Was it clear to you whether or not he would employ those people in the town of Burlington for the routes they are currently on? Or would they be employed out of town and have other drivers come in and replace the drivers that are currently here? So that's one point. Um, the other thing I'd like to mention is that I'm very well aware that there are legal guidelines, thirty B, et cetera, as you had mentioned. Um, that being said, I think it's important to note that if you're bringing some other transportation company into town and you are already being threatened legally, I think that's really something to consider, really something to consider. Because you have a new, this be the new company in town and before they even get their feet wet, they come in and they're threatening to sue the town of Burlington. I think that's something to really think about. And I will tell you on behalf of myself, Bob is wonderful to work for, okay? And these drivers give a hundred percent. I can't speak for anybody else, I can always speak for them, but I'm telling you, they're good people, they're hard workers and they deserve to keep their jobs in town with A and F. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Klein.
Just, so obviously, the information is out there. You know, we've received letters from council from both companies, you know, basically protecting their rights. So I, you know, I know you use the term threatening. We've received similar letters from council for both companies. So that's, and that's normal in a situation like this. Um, I, as far as the first question about the drivers, I don't know, Mr. Mc, do you care to address that? Through the chair?
So I know this is a difficult time. I don't know if you've, you've mentioned that, uh, the other company that I do own, NRT, has been doing business in the town of Burlington since two thousand and six. We've been transporting your special needs students. When you, something falls out of your contract, you call us and we pick up your children. We've been doing that consistently since two thousand and six. I look back at our records and, uh, we're actually transporting children few now. We've done that with a flawless record, NRT, which is the other company that I own. Uh, as far as school bus drivers go, um, listen, um, school bus drivers don't grow on trees. Um, I, I made that quote in the paper. They're highly experienced and trained at the job that they do. They also have a special way about them that can work with. It's hard enough taking care of, um, our own children, never mind seventy-two other children. If a school bus driver, the last thing I'm gonna do is upset, uh, the routing or the children of this town if that driver chooses to come on and do that route. That's what I would do, um, to make the transition as easy as possible. I also, uh, have done this before in other towns where we've gone in. And, and again, you know, I lost a bid this year. You know, I was in Hudson, which freed up some equipment to come here. And I accepted that bid. A company came in, named First Student, largest company in the world, came in and underbid me. And I understood the bid process and I understand the bid process. And as much as I didn't wanna leave Hudson, nor did they want us to leave, um, I did so. Uh, and, and First Student took over that contract July first. To the drivers, everybody here, everybody has a John McCarthy story. But I am not looking to replace you. I am not looking to, uh, take you and put you on a different route. There are a lot of things said in the newspaper. The only thing that I can do at this point, um, is offer you a position. And to the parents, I will be here day one. I will be in that trailer. Uh, I will be working with my staff to make sure that this goes off as smooth, if we are chosen, uh, to, to go as smooth as possibly can. There are bumps at taking over a new contract, uh, but we're pretty experienced at it. We've been doing this a long time. And again, my staff is, uh, willing and able and, and excited to come into Burlington and, and add to what we already do in town. And again, we've been here since two thousand and six, so we're not a stranger to the town of, of Burlington, so.
Thank you. Is there, yes, someone else? Please come up.
Sherri Ellis, um, resident and a town meeting member. And I'm gonna come at this from the town meeting member perspective, not as a parent. I just wanna understand, you gave your timeline and I wanna back up a little bit, um, from there. In May, town meeting is when, um, you ask us to approve not only the extension to the five-year contract, but also the dollar amount.
Extension to the two, the three-year, uh, longer than a three-year?
Long, correct. So the, the extension of that. And that was done in May. This contract was around for a long time. And I just really, we had this discussion at town meeting, really wanna emphasize the fact that waiting until three months before a contract is gonna end to hire a consultant to work out a bid specification, it really needs to be thought about a lot sooner than that. Three months is not a long time to, um, complete the bid specifications and get it out. That should've been done well before and I'm not sure if anyone has a reason as to why it wasn't. Um, the contract originally was a three-year with a one-year extension and another one-year extension. So you had at least a year knowing that this contract was gonna end. And to put the current contractor in this position because of bad timing just really puts a bad note, in my mind, anyway. And I also, um, would like to know if this consultant is basically the, the driving force to this. Did we pay the consultant and is he still employed by us?
Well, first of all, we did hire the consultant January, um, not in March. So I don't know if that makes a difference to you or not.
You talked about it. Um, at the March meeting was when, um, the consultant came to the school committee and discussed, you know, some of the things that were gonna be going on. Your first mention of the contract was at your December meeting. And then in your January meeting, you were going to, um, look into a consultant. And at March meeting is when the consultant came and discussed some things. What went on, you know, outside of that, that I don't know. But even at that, January, six months before a contract is gonna end is, is not sufficient time. But i- is this con, is this, um, you know, traffic consultant still working for us? Did we pay him?
You, can you answer that?
We have not. We have not paid him yet.
All right. Well, that would be something that I would hope that if there's any kind of consequences that the school committee can, um, you know, work with that traffic consultant to, I don't know, any legal things we can do, um, on that end, I would be in favor of that.
Um, Sherri, I, I would just like to disagree on the timing. Um, we, we talked about what we were going to do in the fall and we had the, um, proper amount of time. We brought the consultant in in January, he did some work, then he reported to us and then we went about the process. There was no problem with the timing and the timeline.
Well, I didn't see anything in any of the meeting minutes before December meeting. Um, there was never any discussion publicly.
The meetings did not include the school committee, except the ones that you saw. But the, that all happened.
With the staff.
With staff. And it was, it, it started in plenty of time in January. Time was not the problem here.
Well, again, I go back to the town meeting, asking us, and we had this discussion at town meeting, you asked us for the money for the contract prior to actually extending the contract the way it was in the town meeting order. And to, to have that, that should've been done in January town meeting, asking for an extension of the contract so that you would know well ahead of time that we are, we as town meeting members, our feet weren't put to the fire to say, oh, we have to approve this five-year extension or the extension to five years because now we're at a deadline. We're, we're pushed to the, to the back end. If we did not approve that, what would've happened?
It, it was not an ideal, I'm sorry, it was not an ideal order, I would agree, but did, did you wanna?
I don't, I don't think it was a deadline. We had, we had decided to make a five-year contract an option and then we asked town meeting for permission to do that.
In May.
In May, exactly, because the contract had not expired yet. And had town meeting said no, we'd have gone with a three-year contract, but town meeting said yes, go with a five-year. The timing was fine. I, I don't exactly know why you're not comfortable with it.
We'll just disagree with that. Thank you. Did you wanna add something, Mr. Kuna?
No? Okay. Okay, yes, would you like to speak? Yes. I know you've spoken already. I don't see, is there anyone else who has not spoken who would like to speak? Okay. And it, and if we can keep it to three minutes, that'd be great. Okay. Thank you.
It's just something that's clarified. Again, Alicia Moran, sorry. First, just to clarify something, when there's something that has to be, if we are in a position where we have to have backup from another company, Chrissison is the first people that we call. Um, NRT, I believe, is for, um, out of district children. That's not our call, okay? It's in district. That's, clarify that issue. Secondly, I just.
If I could clarify as well, the contract that we're discussing tonight is for transporting students to the schools in Burlington.
Correct.
It is not transportation, and I'm partially speaking to people who may not be here tonight.
Correct.
Um, it is not for transportation for our students who go out of district.
Correct.
Okay, so go ahead.
The other thing I had a question about was, we were talking about timelines. So their contract was awarded at town meeting in April.
No, I don't think that's accurate.
The bid meeting.
Can, can we let our, our lawyer explain the wording of that?
So, town meeting, the only thing that town meeting?
The school committee meeting. I was talking about, sorry.
I'm sorry, you said, okay, then I don't know.
Oh, okay. So, say it again.
After school committee meeting with the bid. We were awarded the bid in April. A and F Bus Company was awarded the bid in April.
Yes.
Then it went to town meeting, okay?
Not exactly. It, it's two, it's, it's separate actions.
Right.
Okay? There was a vote to award the contract to A and F and I.
Correct.
If you say April, I, I don't have that off the top of my head. Town meeting did, did two things to my knowledge. One is, I believe, they appropriated money for a school transportation contract.
Correct.
And under the law, the, a, uh, municipality or a school district cannot enter into more than a three-year contract for this purpose without specific authorization from town meeting. So town meeting authorized the school committee to enter into a school transportation contract for a period of up to five years.
Right.
But it wasn't any specific contract.
Okay. So the reason why I'm asking this is, you just said that, you know, if whoever is awarded this tonight, that the contract is gonna be signed within a certain time span. How come it wasn't signed when it was approved by town meeting in May? It, there was a time span from May until June where it wasn't awarded.
Well.
Did, it was stated that there was someone who alerted the inspector general. It just seems like this, it just is suspicious, the delay of the signature, the signing of the contract. It just seems like maybe they were waiting for the inspector general to get back to them.
So, I, I'm not gonna speculate as to why the inspector general knew what they knew or, or.
Cause it was stated that there was specifics.
Well, no, no, no.
It was my opinion.
Yeah, we, we don't know. And it really doesn't, in all honesty, it, it, from a legal standpoint, does, does not matter. But the inspector general issued a letter on June third, but did contact at least council, um, I wanna say, whether it was one week or ten days or two weeks, that they had a concern.
Okay.
And they wanted to give as much notice as possible so that if they made a decision, which they did on June third, there would be enough time to have a contract, that, for the school district to fix the problem in time for the next school year. So I can't answer all the timeline issues, other than there was certainly more time in May to get a contract done than there is, depending on how the vote goes tonight. Obviously, September first is now six, six, seven, eight weeks away, whereas in May it was four months away.
Right.
But, uh, it doesn't really matter how the inspector general found out. They, they, they were aware of it. You know, anybody's, you, you can make whatever guess you wanna make, but we, we don't know and it doesn't really matter for our legal purposes.
Okay. I just know there's a lot of questions that parents are asking.
They did let council know and we called the school that they were reviewing this issue. And they were, they were hoping to act quickly, which they did, to give the district enough time to remedy the problem and enough time to have your contract in place for the beginning of the school year.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken who would like to speak tonight? Okay. I'm sorry, another hand. Come on up.
My name is Mary Jo Crawford and, um, quick question. I'm concerned about the special needs kids. Are they gonna be on a seventy bus or are they gonna be on a special needs bus?
Can you answer that, Mr. Kuna, for us?
For in district?
In district, yeah.
So for special needs, we actually in specs require smaller buses than seventy passenger ones. Um, so it could be a twenty passenger, thirty-five passenger, forty-eight passenger.
Is NRT and Trombley equipped with that, those buses?
They have to in their bid specs, yes.
Okay. That was just, I've been working with A and F for fifteen years now and it's, I've been working with the special needs kids and it's.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Okay. Um, I'd like to have a motion on the floor, please.
Quick comment and a motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, sure.
And this is just after listening to everything tonight and over the past few weeks and speaking with council. Uh, my comments are this, the chapter thirty B, it's a fairly straightforward statute and allows a little flexibility, um, overlooking the low bidder. It's, it's a high hurdle and it's a, it's a tough, uh, test to me. Uh, we are very appreciative, Mr. Bent in A and F, for all they've done for the town of Burlington over the years. I know I am and I think I speak for everybody else. They're very professional, they've always been cooperative and, uh, they've been a good business partner with the town for all of these years. I also commend Mr. McCarthy, if he's still here, I can see down in the back, for showing up tonight. An uneasy thing to do, I give him points for that. Um, he also presents as a professional and a responsible person. But at the end of the day, thirty B requires us to take the low bidder. And, um, in this case, the low bid will save the town over a million dollars over the course of five years. Uh, so in view of all of the above and upon the advice of council, I make the following motion. I move that the Burlington School Transportation Bid IFB dated June eleventh, twenty nineteen, representing the regular in-district transportation, special education and early childhood buses, midday kindergarten, special education, summer bus transportation, bus monitors, athletic and activity buses and late buses, be awarded to Trombley Motor Coach at a bid price of three hundred and thirty-three dollars for three-tier, seventy-one passenger buses, three hundred and thirty dollars for WC buses, sixty-five dollars per day for midday kindergarten, sixteen dollars and thirty-six cents per hour for bus monitors and sixty-five dollars per day for late buses. Such total cost not to exceed two million ninety-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. And on the basis of their being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and in the best public interest, I, um, move that we award them the, uh, the bid. And in order to ensure high-quality performance, we further require that the district require a hundred percent performance bond for at least the first year of the contract.
Second. Okay. We have a, a motion and a second. Um, Mr. Murphy, do you have any other comments?
Um, I guess my only additional comment and, you know, I've heard everybody and everybody else and my kids all went through school here with A and F and I, I, I don't have a bad word to say of them. But I would just urge people out of fairness, um, to give the new company a chance, you know? Um, they're seem to be an experienced company, they've been in business for a long time. Change is always difficult, I certainly understand that, but, um...
But they're gonna be transporting our children. So I think it's in everybody's best interest to try to make that work. And we make that work by working together. And, you know, time will tell, I guess, but I think we have to go into this with the right, with the right attitude. And, and like I said, I just think out of fairness, you gotta give them a chance.
Mrs. Monica, do you have any comments?
I wanna thank everyone who's involved with A&amp;F. Their service has been wonderful. I wanna thank everyone who's come here tonight to speak. I wish that the law gave us the ability to use our emotional judgment more, but as has been pointed out, it doesn't. We have a fiduciary responsibility to take the low bid. And I'm hopeful that it will work out, both with the drivers and with the new company. And there isn't much more to say.
I- Is this, okay, Mr. Bell, if you have something brief to add?
Just related to the-
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Just a point of order, Madam Chairman, Roger Bell, please. The amount of money awarded by town meeting, does the balance of that money revert back to the general fund automatically?
I don't know that that's been determined. I don't know the answer, and I don't know if anyone does know the answer tonight. Do you know, Mr. Klein?
I, I just don't know how the money was appropriated, if, yes, I, I don't have enough information to give you an answer to that tonight.
We don't know the answer to that, okay?
Okay, so-
Thank you.
And hopefully, we can, we can address that. Next school committee meeting, is that how this would work?
Well, I have an answer for you.
Okay.
Next, next meeting.
All right.
All right.
Very good, thank you.
All right. Okay. What I'd like to say is that after two weeks, I've spent learning more about all the issues involved in the contract award, our process, our options, and the law. And I never thought I'd know so much about bus contracts. I'm here to represent our parents, students, and families, as well as to represent the community. My priority is to have safe bus rides and high-service expectations, as the committee has had for many years, long before I was here. I have carefully considered all the information that was sent to me. I've consulted repeatedly with our legal counsel, and I did additional research regarding the contract that both bidders have agreed to. We need to follow the correct legal procedures, and therefore, I will be voting for the low bidder, Trombley Motor Coach. And this will also provide significant savings to the town of about $200,000 annually. Another priority of mine is our wonderful bus drivers. The new contract does require that the successful bidder offer employment to the current drivers, and we heard that this, tonight. I hope that our current bus drivers will be driving our kids to school next year. The contract also reserves the right for the district to accept, reject, or change drivers if it is deemed in the best interest of the school district, and I hope that will be reassuring to the parents. In general, I feel that our hands have been tied by the state laws regarding bidding, but we cannot make the award based on preferences or fairness. The benefit to the town is the financial savings, which I believe are significant. The effect on our local business is something that makes me very sad, but our mandate is otherwise. I am going into this new bus contract with an optimistic attitude and a positive expectation that our high standards for service and safety will be met. If the majority votes to award to the lowest bidder, I look forward to our district working with Trombley Motor Coach and Mr. John McCarthy. I thank A&amp;F for all they've done, and all the employees for the great service. At a later time, we may choose, there is an option in the contract, to choose to put cameras on buses. If we do this, the contracts, there's a number of protections there as well. The contract also states that an annual transportation evaluation will be conducted, so we can review any issues that come up. The contract includes language, I said that already. And we do have the hundred percent performance bond. So, if there are no further comments, I'd like to know who would, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, and the chair votes aye. So that passes 3-0-0.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Thank you.